It's 6:30, so I will call to order this meeting Wednesday, November 12th, 2025 or 2026 of the Nottingham Planning Board. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Do we have a volunteer to lead the Pledge of Allegiance?
That'll be me.
All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So first up on our, oh, sorry. Before we start, I, our normal chair Dirk Grotenheys is out sick today. I will be chairing this meeting. I will sit Skip Severns, our alternate for Dirk as a voting member of this meeting. Like to start it off by having us go around and introduce ourselves, starting with Nick.
Nick Cipado, Land Use Coordinator.
Skip Severns, alternate.
John Decker, BOS representative.
Adam Ryan, Land Board Member.
Drew Stevens, Vice Chair.
Chris Evans, Secretary.
Glenn Griswold.
Danny Arsenal.
Blair Haney, SRPC.
All right, thank you. Next item up on our agenda is the minutes from the prior meeting. Hopefully, everybody had some time to go through those. Okay, do we have any edits, changes to the minutes?
I will make a motion to accept the minutes of the October 8th, 2025 meeting as written. I'll second.
Any further discussion? I suppose I, I should have spoken before. You're raring to go, yeah.
You always have a question.
At that meeting, the, there was one other member of the public present, so line 13 should also reflect that Frank Goncalves was present at the meeting. That last name is G-O-N-S-A-L-V-E-S. That name also appears on line 29. It should be Mr. Goncalves. Those were the, that was the only edit that I saw.
Your attention to details, impressive.
Indeed.
So maybe you'd like to modify yours to do as corrected?
I would like to modify my motion to accept the minutes as, as noted.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second now.
We have a motion from Mr. Griswold with a second from Mr. Ryan. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain?
Aye, was not present.
All right, the motion passes 6:01. Okay, we have one public hearing tonight. It is case number 25-010, LLA, 10 and 20 Deerfield Road. Application from Landry Surveying on behalf of the Fairplough Revocable Trust, Catherine Fairplough and Eric Peel, requesting a lot line adjustment. The affected properties are located at 10 and 12 Deerfield Road and are identified as Tax Map 53, Lot 18B and Tax Map 53, Lot 18. For those members of the board, you will not find the materials in your binder. They were sent to you via mail. Hopefully, you brought them with you and you can review them that way. We may have extra copies floating around that can be given to those that don't. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Landry to present the application. Thank you, Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So again, for the record, my name is Peter Landry of Landry Surveying, representing the lot line adjustment for my clients. And at this point, it's pretty straightforward. I assure you, if you've looked at the plans, there's a topography plan and a clean sheet. The intent was to make the smaller lot, Lot 12, a little bit larger, over five acre lot, and reducing the larger of the two lots down to looks like six acres. None of the front ditch has been altered and what we're, the kind of the intent of this whole project or what speared this is, the Peels that number 12 would like to do some addition. They'd like to do some work and enlarge their garage and then an addition out off the back. So what we tried to do is adjust the lot line to move it further away from their improvements, their house, their driveway to allow as much room as, as we can from a practical standpoint without making the lot lines look too ridiculous. We have to set some final monuments. We haven't set those yet, but other than that, everything is on either on the clean sheet or if you want to see the more of the improvements, the septic systems and the wells, that'll be on the topography sheet. The topography sheet was presented to show the town that it's still, these, both these lots after the adjustments contain a 30,000 contiguous bit for building requirement exclusive of the building setbacks and then additional topography to, to cover a minimum of a two acre lot, which is the minimum lot size in town. So there's coverage for that to show there are no 20% slopes. The back of the lot, we do put in a waiver for topography and wetlands, which we can go over a little later. And you can see what we did is we took the wetland conservation area from the town GAS maps and added that to that back left corner. It's certainly not flagged, but it's accurate enough to just let somebody know it's wet in that back corner. So with that, I'll, I know you've got to go through and accept the application and then I'll certainly answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. So just to remind the board, the process here is that first, we have to vote on the completeness of the application before we take jurisdiction of the application and then decide further on it. Blair, were there any issues with the completeness of the application?
No, I just note, and as Mr. Landry pointed out, there were a couple of waiver requests, so you might want to vote on those as well, but as far as application being complete, assuming you approve the waivers, then yes, it's complete.
Okay, we don't need to approve the waivers before accepting that? Okay.
Just accepted.
The way you worded that made me a little.
Yeah, I, yeah, sort of a CY.
So unless any members have any questions about the completeness of the application, we're looking for a motion to accept this as complete so that we can move on to discussing the application itself.
So who?
We have a motion from Mr. Severns. Do we have a second?
Second.
Heard it from Mr. Evans first. Any further?
Beat it.
Any further discussion?
I had a question about the waivers, but I don't know if that's appropriate right now.
But that should be discussed during the actual application itself, yeah. Okay, no further discussion? All in favor of accepting case 25010, LLA, 10 and 12 Deerfield Road? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes 7:00. Okay, so the application is now accepted. Is there anything else that you would like to add, Mr. Landry, before we?
Not anymore than I've already said.
All right, thank you. I will open it up to the board now. Any questions that the board might have for Mr. Landry about this application?
I have one.
Okay.
Ancient well, can you attest to that, sir?
It's older than I am. Generally, I use ancient when I, 20, 40 plus years, you know, but it could be older. It's unused, it's down the back.
No, it's just kind of an odd location way back there.
Yeah, maybe when they drilled it or when they dug it, it wasn't as, could have been a farm well or something.
So this is all the existing driveways where they sit right now?
Yes.
So no change on the road, front ditch, any?
No change on the front ditch, no change on the driveways or the improvements. Just the lot line, the interior lot line that they share.
Perfect. And that lot line was essentially, well, south of the previous line, so it just depicts.
The, the line is labeled lot lines to be eliminated. That's the existing lot line today.
Which is a stone wall, if you will.
Part of it is, yeah. Okay. And then, then there's a section from there to the road that's a little closer to the improvements. Yeah.
And Pete, the, the septics and wells are not affected by this?
No, you can, you can look at, clearly see that for yourself on the topo sheet, the second sheet, you can see they're identified on number 12, there's all back, septic tank, EDA, that's the effluent disposal area. And the well's a little harder to see on number 12, but it's right in front of the garage and the driveway. And the other, on number, on number 10, it's labeled 12, but that should be 10 on the That has a well out front, the septic and the EDA out back.
The only comment that I had from my staff report, I don't have any comments on the waivers, so, or you can take those up when they want, but as far as like staff comments on technical features, just a reminder that you need to submit a monument certification document and the new lot line has to have monuments at 300 foot intervals. I noticed that you, it looks like you have monuments on there, the new lot line. Are those already placed in rebars and stuff?
No.
Okay, that's proposed.
But they're a reminder that we're going to go set the points according to the rules and, yeah.
All right, fair enough.
There are different ways to represent that. Some survey companies or Ninja may say to be set. I just don't prescribe to that. Knowing that we're going to set them and do the monumentations to forget, so we get we just anticipate a rebar. We may hit a rock and put a drill hole, but it will have a sufficient, significant or sufficient monument there, whatever we end up putting in.
Okay, yeah, just a reminder every 300 feet. And then do like granite bounds at the corners.
At the road, right?
Yeah, at the road, at the back side of the lot.
In the back?
No.
That's not from the?
Not part of the, right? We don't do it at the corners?
No. It's only on where it intersects with public property, i.e. the road.
Okay.
And it's, you know, not required if you get a stone wall right there because.
And we anticipate a drill hole with a cap. What I want.
Okay.
For the rules that regs.
Anything else, Blair? No, that was it.
Thank you.
Does the board need any more time generally for questions before we discuss the waivers that are being requested? Okay, so there are two waivers that are being requested by the applicant. One of them, let's take the first one. It's a waiver for sections 8.3 and 8.4. The topography outside the 30K area is not provided as this is not impacted by the lot line adjustment request.
I make a motion that we accept the, that waiver.
We have a motion by Mr. Evans. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
A second by Mr. Griswold. Do we have any further discussion on this motion?
I just had a question on, it's my ignorance, I'm new to this. I was wondering why there was a waiver even required for this with the amount of land they have? Is it because?
So you can see that the, you know, the entire area has not been surveyed because they're only adjusting this part, so the idea is that it's kind of, it doesn't impact the rest of the, you know, decision to have a pool.
Right, okay, that's all, I was just wondering.
Correct, Mr. Landry. I didn't, didn't want to speak on your behalf there, but that's.
Covered everything up. Like I said, this is, there's a two acre minimum shown for each lot in addition to the 30K, so sufficient topo.
No further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Did we move that one?
Yes.
Okay. I'm good.
Any abstentions? All right, the motion to accept waiver for the topography has passed 7:00. The second waiver is for wetland information being approximate. It's from sections 8.3 and 8.4 for similar reasons as the whole site, site topography.
I'll make a motion to approve. Just a quick question. Pete, I know that you would have looked at this, but did you see any evidence of any wetlands in and around where the buildings are?
Oh, no, not at all. We would have, we would have gone to the next level and, but now it's, this one, if you've been out there top of a hill and even though you can have wetlands on a hill, there's nothing around this area.
Just wanted to put that on the record.
Good.
Motion by Mr. Severns. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Ryan seconds the motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion for the waiver passes 7:00. That takes care of the waivers. Now we will open up, I think it's time for public comment. Sorry, this is my first time chairing a meeting, so you'll have to bear with me a bit.
You're doing all right?
Thank you.
So yes, Mr. Landry, if you wouldn't mind, we do have some members of the public here, it seems, so we will open up this case for public comment. This is only public comment about this case in particular. Any general public comment can be saved until later on in this meeting. We do have a lot of time for that. I do not see any members of the public approaching. We open the public comment at 6:49 and I will close the public comment at 6:49. Okay, thank you, Mr. Landry. You can return. Sorry for the quick exercise.
That's okay.
Like church.
Grab a new chair.
Okay, so at this point, we have approved the waivers requested by the applicant. Is there anything else that the board would like to ask of the applicant or discuss? If not, at this point, it seems appropriate to make a motion on this application. Somebody would like to do so.
I will make the motion to accept this application and approve it as written. Or how do I, oh, okay. With the conditions of approval as noted on the planning board requirements, subject to the waivers as requested. If the.
Original MyLARs.
Okay, conditions of approval being planned copies with the seal and signature, original MyLAR, electronic submission per regulation as required, and fees all paid.
Bound set every 300 feet.
Yeah.
We have a motion.
He said that.
We have a motion from Mr. Griswold. Do we have a second?
Sure.
I heard, but I saw Mr. Severns second that with his hand, so we have a second from Mr. Severns. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving case 26010? Please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, this case has been approved with conditions.
It's 25010.
I'll say 25010.
Yeah, I thought you said 26.
I think it should be 26.
It's 25.
Sorry.
It's this year. What year are we?
Six.
Yeah, right. Okay. That concludes this case. Thank you, Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Pete.
Sorry for the date confusion.
The whole year.
Bio list, you know, so.
It's getting close to that.
All right. Okay, thank you, everybody. That is our, the single case that we're hearing tonight. We will have a conceptual hearing in a little bit. Right now, it is time for general public comment. It is 6:51, so I will open up the floor to any members of the public who would like to speak to the board about anything in particular, just not any case specifics. Any members of the public who would like to speak?
No.
Yeah, I would, Dana Davis.
Okay. So could you come up, sit, speak your, say your name?
I'm not going to be in law.
Okay.
I've got a Land River Advisory Committee. We had an update.
Okay.
We haven't updated since 2013, so I'll leave this for you guys.
Thank you.
Take a look at it, pass it around.
All right.
I also put a copy down at the library down the road.
Great, okay.
I'm going to give one to Nottingham Conservation Commission as well.
Perfect, appreciate that. Would you mind just stating your name again so that it gets picked up for the transcription?
It's Dan Davis.
Dan Davis, okay, thank you.
And it's Nottingham, 139 Deerfield Road, AMP Nottingham, Representative for the Land River Advisory Committee.
Perfect.
Thank you for your work in that, Dan.
Pretty short and sweet. See you guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other members of the public who would like to speak?
I, I, I'm just going to say something as a member here. I ran into Mike the other day, if he wants to get up, and he, while we're doing our master plan meeting and, and updating our zoning, some, some of his perspectives really kind of were interesting and, you know, he's lived in town for his whole life and is, him and his wife, and here's renting, and he's trying to, you know, stay here with his, and raise a family, and he's living in a small apartment and his, his story just, I see it all the time and, and I, and I said, you know, you should come and share with our, our board and, you know, what, what you're going through as a young person in our town and, and, you know, because we need to be paying attention to everybody, not just, you know, old people. There's young people too that want to start families and that have lived here their whole life and, and we don't have housing to meet their needs or prices and, and it's a struggle. And, you know, he mentioned some of his friends moved out of town and, or just are living with their parents and just can't find a place to live and, you know, he's held off on starting a family because of his living situation and a lot of young people are holding off because of debt. They, they're, they, they can barely afford to live on their own, never mind, you know, affording a family with, you know, childcare services. So it just, I invited him to just come in and mention that and answer any questions about that, but that's, did I catch some of that story?
I'll share. Is that okay?
Yeah, please do. Just take us here, please state your name and address and, yeah.
So I'm Mike Tremblay. I live on 117B, Stages Road in Nottingham. I didn't grow up here, by the way. I grew up in New Hampshire my whole life. I actually grew up in Barrington. My wife, however, has lived here her whole life and her dad also did as well. He works for the highway department, Steve Black, and Tracy Black's actually the tax collector, my aunt-in-law. I'm a pastor at a local church in Raymond, literally on Nottingham Road. Adam, bro goes to my church. That's the way to go. Both my in-laws are vets and, yeah, we just love our country and we love Nottingham. I have like an overwhelming amount of influence in my sphere. I pastor teenagers and young adults aged 12 all the way up to 30. And the common concern among all of them, and so I guess I'm not just representing myself, but I also just want to say their piece as well. They're all really, really frustrated and I understand, like, our country is the way that it is, but I'll be honest with you, my sister-in-law just moved out to Ohio to marry someone over there, which is great, but she's buying a house out there for $80,000, a three-bedroom home for 80 grand. And it's not just rural Ohio. I mean, it's a decent place to live. And so I understand New England's expensive. I understand living here has a cost, but I will say this, I have heard from liberals and conservatives in opposition of young people living here. Conservatives don't want our town to be super liberal and so they want to make it harder for young people to live here, which is stupid. And I've heard from liberals who only care about the environment and not people and make so many restrictions in laws that it's very difficult for someone like me to afford to live here because of builders have to increase their costs in order to comply with towns or town regulation. It just makes it harder. And then on top of that, when you have zoning, and our town is less restrictive than others, at least not, not, not now, I guess, because things have changed, but Nottingham is actually not that restrictive, in my opinion, compared to other towns. However, I think it's still too restrictive in some aspects. My, my in-laws live on 3.2 acres and we, there's nothing we can do about that, like in terms of us potentially living with them. And I, I've learned today about ADUs and stuff like that, but even with that, from what I read before I even came here, it seems like it's still restrictive right now. I talked to Chris that it's going to change potentially in March, but my frustration, all right, is the fact that I represent a significant amount of young people and they're all going to leave this state. And when you're all old and dying in diapers, nobody's going to take care of you. And I understand, we can't do everything we possibly can for the next generation, but they are the future of this state. And my, my suggestion is twofold. My suggestion is one is that all of you consider on a daily basis what you're doing in order to make it possible for people like me to continue to live in this state, who were born and raised in this state, who love New Hampshire and don't want to see it turn into Massachusetts or New York City, because those people make significantly more money than people like me. And they will live in this state, your town will change, and it'll be what you don't want it to be in the end anyway. And so my question to you in regards of that is like, what are you going to do about that to make it possible for people like me to actually stay here and live? We would love to, but I just don't know how possible it's going to be. My other suggestion, because I have a friend who's on the planning board in Raymond, so I asked her, I was like, what do you think about single family homes on like one acres of land? Personally, after talking with her, I'm probably not very in favor of it. However, I think there needs to be something within the zoning to make that possible for people who are either local within the town, descendants of people who have lived in the town their whole life. There needs to be something. Otherwise, you're going to have people from out of state moving in here. There needs to be some way for my generation to be able to live here. I know that's like a bunch, it's more me saying my piece than asking you questions, but I don't know the right things to ask you because the town codes and the laws are impossible for someone like me to read. And anyone in my generation just wants to have kids, they want to have a family, and they don't want to be in debt the rest of their life. And I'll say this, I am of the top 80% of my generation in terms of how I've lived my life. 80% of my generation's in debt. I have no debt. My wife has no debt. We went to college responsibly. We did everything we could. Right now, we have a significant amount of savings, but it's not nearly enough for what it would take to live here. It'd be fine if it was 10, 15 years ago, but not anymore. And that breaks my heart because I love this town and I want to be here, so. So, yeah, I don't have anything else to say.
Thank you, Mike, for sharing that story.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, cool. All right, any other members of the public wishing to speak? All right, it is 7:00 PM, and I will close the public comment. Okay, next up on our agenda, we have a preliminary conceptual hearing. Are the, I guess applicants, is that what I should call you applicants, here to discuss the conceptual? Have to take a seat if you wouldn't mind just stating your names and addresses.
My name's Waverly Cotton, and I live at 6 Friar Tuck Lane.
Neil Martiniak, 8 Friar Tuck Lane.
Please let us know what your.
Back in 2019, about five years ago, we started the process of the lot line adjustment because it had been discovered before that, that part of my driveway was on his property, which really was on the property of the people that owned the house and the property before he bought it. It really wasn't a big issue. The, the first person that discovered it was, um, the, the first people that owned 8 Friar Tuck Lane. And they brought a piece of paper to us to let us know that he had investigated it more and found out that part of our driveway and a little part of the corner of the shed was technically on his property, which we weren't really aware of at the time. So we signed the agreement saying that we wouldn't encroach on his property anymore. We wouldn't build anything else or whatever. And that's how it got left with him. What was his name again?
Wickliffe.
Wickliffe. They were the first owners. Then, um, so anyway, so we just wanted to clear it up, to, to clear it up. So we went to Mr. Landry, who's now gone. And he started the process for us. We put the application in to, to start the process. And he did come out and do the surveying and put little pink flags in places. And it was going to be an even exchange of land, but just make it so now my driveway and my shed was on my property and, um, it would be taken care of in the back of the lots. We didn't continue with it because there was a few things that needed to be changed. And I do have the letter from the town dated July 24th, 2019 of, it says, "After reviewing, a motion was made by Mrs. Bascom to approve the case number and seconded by Mr. Davies with conditions," which there were three conditions. And that's what hasn't been completed. And we didn't, we didn't follow through at the time. I think it was because of the extra cost it was going to be. I'd already paid Mr. Landry for the original surveying of the land. And he did the, the plot, I guess you call it. And, but then there was a few changes, and he said that he'd be willing to do those for an extra charge. And I don't even remember what the charge was now. But what we'd like to do is go forward to get the changes. I'll pay Mr. Landry whatever it is that he requires for making the changes. But it's been brought to our attention that because time has lapsed, it kind of has to start at the beginning again with letters going out to the abutters and such. So I guess we're, we're asking if we can continue with this without starting from the beginning again.
What is so, hold on real quick. Blair, this is like the first conceptual that I've done. So what are our, just for the board to know, a conceptual is non-binding to the board. It's essentially, we're giving advice to somebody who comes before us, but it's not an official plan or anything like that.
Yeah. You know, it's supposed to focus on procedure, which is exactly what she's asking. Not at least right now. First question. But, um, yeah, it's supposed to be very high level because as you can see, left the name, it would come for a lot line adjustment, but nothing's been posted to neighbors. So it's supposed to be, stay pretty high level.
Yeah, so the abutters have never, haven't changed, okay? Between the properties, there, there is a person down the street, the property has changed hands. And like Waverly mentioned, it's a, it's an 1,800 square foot trade, you know, to allow her driveway to be on her property. And when she started the application, the previous owner was there. And then when she had submitted it, when we came to the board in 2019, it had the previous homeowners on the, on the plats, okay? In addition to, there, there was an easement on my property, okay? That was terminated when we bought the, the property. And the, the easement was drawn on the plat. And, um, and the, the board said that they wanted name, uh, change. And there was one other thing.
Yes. The misspelling of your wife's name.
Yeah, misspelling of the wife, my wife's name. It was clear, clear.
So you're saying this access easement?
It's gone.
It no longer exists.
Yep, terminated.
And that was all discussed in 2019, right? Because that's made it into the letter.
It, it made it into the letter that those three items were discussed at that time, so.
Yeah, I didn't see the letter, but yeah, sure, good.
I'm, I'm just.
I'm not doubting it, yeah. So people can all do easements and stuff, so, yeah. I guess what I'm wondering is always, it, it looks like of the easement, if we're still looking at it on the plan, the, the edge of the easement that's closest to number six is, is the ac, is therefore the property line?
Uh, it was, I believe it was a 10 or 20-foot easement on my property, not on hers.
Right, okay, yeah, so the property line is one edge of the easement.
Yes.
And it's the edge that's closest to number six?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. I mean, it seems like a lot of effort for a tiny corner of, of a driveway. Am I missing something?
It's a title issue.
Yeah.
It, it, yeah. Putting my surveyor hat on for a second. It, what it makes it is that it makes it if that they want to sell or get a new mortgage or refinance or anything like that, it could potentially impact them.
I mean.
Because it's someone else using their property.
Sure. I mean, a, a, an easement, you don't need us.
The easement's gone.
No, but I'm saying if you just do an easement for that quarter.
No, it's not what I want. It's the one, one lot line adjustment.
Lot line adjustment.
Yeah, that's, that's the right thing to do.
That, that was my question.
Yeah, it's just, it's not typical to get that squirrely line, right?
True. Yeah, it's still the right thing to do.
Right.
It's not really a squirrel, it's a zigzag. And it's just, it's a trapezoidal zigzag and squating, uh, you know, trading 1,800 feet for 1,800 feet.
Sounds like a fair trade, you know? If you guys agree.
So you're number six and eight, right?
Yes.
Okay. So you, you both have, they both lots have front, you know, 229 feet of frontage and 240. So it's not going to be like, one of these is going to require a variance initially. Is my 10-second impression, looking at the picture here. Yeah, they get two frontages on the corner there. So, um, these people that were just here did a lot line adjustment with Pete, and they just shifted the line over to make adjustments to accommodate, you know, expanding the house or whatever.
Towards the back of the property, not up by the road.
Right, right. There's, there's, didn't change the frontage, but.
No, it doesn't do the frontage.
Right, yours will.
Yours what?
Why would it?
No, it's not.
No, it's not?
It's not.
They're starting at the same, they're starting at the same spot.
Oh, okay, I, I was just, where's the, how? You, you guys are looking, you're looking at something.
Some plan, so I don't know where.
It's in here. It's in our notebook.
Technically, you're not supposed to have plans.
They're not looking at plans of what they're proposing.
Yes, you have an old plan, that would be. Second case in your binder, there's a plan.
That's why I'm like.
All right, so apparently there is a.
Oh, this shows.
Nick snuck one in, look at him.
There's a plan in your binder.
We can't look at that.
The second.
New drawing.
Second case.
Look at the old drawing.
File.
They can't look at anything new right now.
All right, that was old.
Sorry, we're looking at this old one. So, all right. Very, so it would be similar to what we just did.
So, right. Problem is that, my understanding is that the notice of decisions have a two-year, is that right? Two-year time limit on them until they expire? And so that notice of decision would no longer apply. And so you would have to come before this board. You could use the same plans. It'd have to be, you know, like current stamps, I believe, that type of stuff. Nothing in your plan could change, but you would have to come back before this board to get another approval, ostensibly, you know, another approval to get that lot line adjusted.
Would we have to have Mr. Landry do another survey of those properties?
I am not sure about that.
It would have to be, because you're going to record these plans. And if that easement doesn't exist anymore, or anything else has changed in the field, then it should, it has to reflect that.
It has to reflect that the easement isn't between the two properties.
Precisely. At the very least, that. Any other changes, like if you added a garage or something, you know?
But, yeah. Did you get a variance at the time, was that, or?
No, there's a lot line adjustment.
Lot line?
According to the records.
Wait, lot line just, but, but just never recorded?
Just never went, we, the three items were never, were never, the round to the board conditional items were never done.
Yeah.
And can you, what were those conditions again? It's here too, isn't it?
It is.
Nope, sorry.
Update plan to show removal of 20-foot driveway easement. Update application and plans with new owner. Previously, Matt and Amanda Sherlin, and currently Neil and Dana.
Martiniak.
Martiniak. And three is inclusion of surveyor stamp and signature on plan. Well, I must have a copy of this somewhere, but I copy it.
We do have a copy.
So, yeah, essentially that, that question would be, you know, what Mr. Landry would do to, you know, for updating what you had before type of thing, but we can't really, you know, we, we wouldn't be able to say how that process would go.
I was hoping he was going to say, I had a phone call into him about two weeks ago and talked with him over the phone, and he told me he couldn't get to it right then. He was busy, but he remembered the whole situation and said he'd get back to me. But he hadn't yet. So I, I still wanted to come to the meeting just to find out what we need to do.
So from the board's perspective, it, you know, it is an expired acceptance. So it would have to go through the, you know, through the process again, application, come before the board, whole nine yards.
Do you have the application to take with me tonight or?
You could, I can email it to you. I'll email it to you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Nick, Nick is our staff guy. And, um, so, and just a note on a lot line adjustment. It's, it's, there's a new plan that gets recorded, but also that you have to convey the property. This is commonly not done and creates a problem. It's just this fact that you have a piece of paper that says this is where the land is, but you need to deed over to one side, and they need to deed over the other side to match that plan to put this on the permanent title record. And sometimes I, I'm in the real estate business and I see this, I, I have it happening right now on a transaction where they never bothered to record the deeds behind this. So just, it's an extra step in the process. Pardon me?
How is that done?
Once the survey is done, you would contact a, a local, probably title attorney. And the title company is probably less expensive than calling an attorney. Like to charge lots of money per hour. And then they would, they could draft a deed, and then you go in there and both parties on either side of the lot line sign that deed.
Okay.
Okay, so it's just an extra step.
That's not through the town, then?
No, just to be clear, that's not part of the planning process at all. That would be something after you get, you know, any approval, anything here. That's completely separate from the planning process. He's just making you aware of that for, if you go through with this to.
Puts it on public record forever, and then it's never.
Okay.
Never can be questioned again.
Okay.
And that can't expire or anything, it's.
All right, so for application purposes, obviously the three items that were discrepancy before, they need the conditional items, get those completed, all right? And also get the title attorney to do a draft. You know, as you said, the convey, the conveyance of the, the land swap, basically.
That part's not necessary for the planning board's aspect. That's up to you to do that part.
Oh, all right, all right.
For, for our part in the process, we just need your application for the lot line adjustment again so that you can accept that and then.
And consider that after you get the approval from us.
All right.
And it would be just the same as what happened just before. The exact same format and meeting and procedures, just.
Okay, what, once the application came into the town?
Yes. Yeah.
The application may be different, touch different from what they submitted?
Probably not, it was in 2019. I mean, it's similar, it'll be similar.
I have a copy of that here too, but.
Yeah, just, just to be aware.
You can find it on the town website too, if you want to do it tonight. If not, I'll email it to you by.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, moving on on our agenda, it's time for select board committee, staff and board member updates. Mr. Principato.
Uh, my first update, as I emailed all of you, I'm going to be leaving at the end of the month, which I'm, I'm sad about. I love working here and for all of you, but it's only a part-time job. Do a full-time job for other pieces.
Did they offer you a full-time job? Here?
No, they didn't. For things that you guys need to get done planning-wise, you need to make a calendar for 2026 just for application deadlines and schedules. I can get working on that for you if you'd like. I don't know how you guys have done that in the past.
I don't either.
We, we have it, so it's on you.
Yeah. If you would like to get it by the end of the month.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'll have a draft done and I'll send it to Blair, that way you can go at the next meeting.
Wonderful, thank you.
And the last thing I have is for the warrant articles. Last year, our warrant articles were presented here. And when they were presented here, they were presented long or something along those lines. And when they went into the voting system, they were longer than they usually were. So when you guys go through them this time, make sure that they are shorter in the correct format. This is what I was told by Ellen, and I will try to get more details for you. But just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that before I left. That's what I've got.
I, I did, I did see that on the warrant, that the, they're, they're, they were quite lengthy. And, you know, I wonder if we could summarize that.
I think typically.
Like, you know, vote to change Article 13-3 or something regarding this, or instead of laying the whole thing out. I, I don't, I don't know what the procedure is for that, so.
It used to be you had to say what the words were and what the new words are.
That's, I don't see long and short there, but.
I think what they're looking for is you have the little blurb explaining what it does, and then you can link the full language to it on the town website. And that's more of what they're looking for.
Okay, link it.
Well, that's new, I guess.
Something along those lines. Just be aware of this moving forward.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks for putting that on our radar. Just we'll make sure that we do whatever is needed there.
We, right, because we do need to make sure that it's presented enough that they can see the before and after.
You need to know what you're voting on.
Right.
You need the context, but.
Yeah, you know, and it's, it's hard because if people don't do their homework upfront, but then they're spending their time there.
Sure, like a steep slope ordinance this last, you know, that was a huge thing. How do you put in a new ordinance without explaining the whole ordinance?
It's, right, you get, you got to explain the whole ordinance, and you got to, and it's very costly because it's on the ballots, and then they take really a long time to process. And we had lines backed up.
Definitely something we need to figure out.
Hmm. So I've seen other communities to do this, but I don't know if this is just a practice of that's the way we always did it. But they would, the warrant article would be the summary, But they would, the warrant article would be the summary, but the full changes are available publicly like a week beforehand. And that the town considered acceptable. Is that it, what you're able to do here, or are you only?
I'm not positive if we can do that or not. Because.
I'm not either.
I know that some towns do that.
Doesn't, doesn't seem to be correct. The, the summary, to me, shouldn't be on the ballot because it contains a motion typically somehow, sure.
I know towns like Fremont, for example, they do exactly that. They have a fuller, you know, well, full warrant article that you find on their town website or at the, you know, town clerk's office. But then the actual warrant itself is the summary. So I know for a fact that Fremont did that, that's, you know, the last.
Middleton does it. I, I work at the last year on zoning changes.
I don't know how they do it or what they're.
I just don't understand what the people are voting for at that point in time.
Well, they do it because they did their, they did their research.
Well, I, I understand providing a summary is okay, but not on the ballot. That's not what the summary should be. Separate piece of paper, fine, you know.
Like I said, I don't know if it's what's allowed by RSA and, and town clerk best practices.
And what we've approved in town.
Right, precisely.
Well, if it's posted.
Because some ballot, some zoning articles can be insane. I mean, you're adding a whole new section and stuff like.
10 pages.
Yeah. That's why I just, that's why to me it made sense when I saw somebody doing that. It was Middleton.
Right, I know that some towns have done that, but I'm not sure what we can do. I mean, I, it warrants further investigation for sure.
Maybe there's a supplemental addition to the warrant article that's separate that, you know, here's the summary and then to read it, see appendix A with the full blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, I don't know what we can do.
And is it sufficient?
I know this town tried once before by just eliminating, identifying where the words were that needed to be eliminated. And, and that was just a cluster. It made no sense.
Yeah.
It was easier to just put the whole thing out there. Now, certainly, we can find a way of making the new change shorter, less words. But I don't think that's in the cards.
I think what Blair described. To remove a word from the zoning, like, you know, we had talked about family, moving to like two-unit.
Two, two.
Selling unit. If we remove the word family, I'm not trying to pick on family. I'm just saying that's a word that would appear consistently throughout the document. I can't imagine what that would look like.
Correct.
You know? There's words that become like you're no longer allowed to use it. So that's why I just feel like there has to be a way. But that's why I was asking you if you could look into it to ask the town clerk what the procedure is. There's a format for it.
Right.
So, I don't know if, I just looked at some of your examples. I don't know if that's following their format or what you think it is.
That's our format from last year. I think the way you described it is how it should go with the actual warrant article and then the full blip at a public place. The issue is when you guys present it at the planning board, however it's presented here in the meeting is how it gets moved forward.
Correct.
Right. And last year it got moved forward as the full thing or something like that.
I see, okay.
Well, I think that's more that the language can't change.
Yes, and because the language was the full blurb. So your article and all the supplemental information with it. That's how it went into all the voting stuff. We want to avoid that this year.
We don't need, we shouldn't need the supplemental stuff.
Exactly.
But we need the actual full.
What would the supplemental stuff be?
I, I don't know. I'm not sure what, you know.
All right, do we?
So was it like, was it like the steep slopes ordinance? Was that, was it problematic, the way that that was put forward?
I don't know what you're talking about here.
I think what he's saying, the way I would interpret what he's saying is that if it says 2,000 square feet over a hundred-foot run, it can't change to 2,000 square feet over a 99-foot run, right? Like whatever language gets approved here has to move forward. I don't think it's a formatting issue what he's saying. I think it's more of just the content of what the regulation's gonna be. But we knew that, so you can't change.
I'm confused again. What changed between when we had it at the board to when it went off the warrant?
He's just saying, he's saying whatever gets approved here has to move forward to the warrant article. And we knew that. You can't change language between final approval here and warrant. Like we can't have a third meeting and say, yeah, you know what? Maybe we should do it this way instead.
Yeah, okay. That didn't happen or something? Let's not wait, okay.
No, it, you know, what happened last time is the final version you guys put out was larger than it usually is in the past or something along those lines.
There were a lot of changes.
Right, this is.
So they, so the directive is don't do as many ordinance changes?
No, that's not, not what it is.
So, I know, I know I was being a little bit.
I'll look into it more.
Flipping there, but no, are you, is the request for us to somehow summarize these before they get pushed forward so they're smaller on the ballot in some way?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, so, yeah, we're gonna have to, if that is the request, we need to figure out if that's something we can actually do. And I don't think any of us know if we can actually do that right now, so let's, uh.
And I may not be able to go through that whole process myself, which is why everyone else should know.
So you should loop me in. It's part of what I do, yeah. I was just looking for you to find out what that format, what that template looks like. And you, you have a reasoning at the bottom here.
Right.
And, and that's part of the template?
I believe so. That's what we did the year before.
Right. So the reasoning may be that extra.
Sorry?
That reasoning stuff at the bottom may be the extra stuff that we don't need.
Or the reasoning is all that appears in the warrant article.
I think that's more of what it is.
So like Fremont's warrants, that's essentially what it is, a summary and then the reasoning why. And then the full thing is available elsewhere. So it's something like a summary, the reasoning behind it to give a little more. And I'm just speaking from what I've seen, you know? And I'm not saying that that's the right way for us to do it. I'm just giving you observations here.
Skip's Googling.
I got it on Town Report. And yeah, the first one we had, article number two, which is our amendment number one, that continues throughout everything.
I got it on the paper.
I got it. We added at the bottom, I, I guess, reasoning, the reference to 200 by 200 foot square, so forth and so on. It is the reasoning. I don't think I've ever seen that added to the public notice of what we were doing. It may have this time.
Do you mean the public notice before we heard here? Yeah, I don't think that, are you reading the public notice?
This is the warrant, this is what was on the warrant.
Right.
Yeah, I, I, that probably got added by Ed, you know, from here to warrant. Because I don't think we put reasoning when we have it here in this room. We know the reason, we put it together.
Now, I, I seem to vaguely recall, but it's only vague, you know? Because it was like a long year ago. I don't remember what I had for breakfast this morning. The, we, we had these meetings and discussions and we voted. And then it got posted out there. And Lana was probably very helpful. You might look at, if she's still about, you might check with her. She'd be a great resource on that.
Like flies, you know?
I know. And then, and then it went, I believe it got sent off to the town attorney for verbiage and wording or legality or something. And then it got sent off to the warrant article to be posted for the warrant article.
Right, but if it was approved here and the lawyer is gonna say, yes, you have to post, including the reasoning, if that's what was agreed upon.
They'll just comment on what you send them. They're not gonna tell you, you can't have reasoning at the bottom.
Right, exactly.
That's not what their job is.
So Nick, I, I think we're, as a town, a member of the municipal association?
We are, NHMA.
Okay, and, you know, perhaps that's something you could look into with your vast planning background and training.
Confer with the town clerk with Ellen. I'll do the research here and figure it out.
You, you gotta.
Let me, let me finish. You might also wanna, if with the municipal employee association, update the members because only certain people on the planning board can confer with them. I tried to call them once about a question and they said, sorry, you, 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 you're just on the planning board. You're not on our name list. So you might look at who's on that list of who's authorized to even talk to them. If we're paying them fees and then we can't talk to them, then kind of defeats the purpose. So I think just the chair.
Blair's already saying that that's not really the path to go.
Those guys aren't all call attorneys, you know? You, you guys, the town has their own attorney.
Well, yeah, but if we're paying this municipal fee and this is something they do for all towns, they might, instead of spending a lot of town money for attorneys, we're already paying them dues, can we get some help from them? That's all.
Yeah, just check with Ellen. So, all right, when you put this together, remember, when you underline something, it means it's being added.
Sure, yeah.
But everything here is underlined.
Yeah, I took it from your document, just as the rough draft for it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, those are not complete by any means.
Okay, 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 all right. Yeah. Then, yeah, I think we just need to, the clerk, we just, you know, we just need to find out what exactly is expected. And if, and if they're unsure, then maybe we talk to the town attorney and just say, okay, tell us once and all, once and for all, what are we allowed to do? And then make that decision. Because like, including what we're starting with and then going to is insane.
It's a ton of stuff, right? That's what we did last year too in some of the, some of the items.
No, you, what it's supposed to do is you just, at the very most, you take the old language, the existing language, and you either cross out or underline. Cross out stuff that's being taken out, underline stuff that's being added. And that's, that's the change, that's it. So it's only one version of the whole thing. And that would be, that would be the most that we would have to do.
Right, that makes sense because then you could read the entire text from what was previous to what is proposed.
I mean, you're doing, it looks like track changes.
Right, exactly.
Yes.
Yeah.
That would be the most. Like I said, I'm still think you can get away with just doing the reasoning because you can make the changes available, but.
So Nick and Blair, would you be able to figure out if that's even possible for us? Because that'll, you know, that'll change our decision or our discussion about it, whether or not it's even a possibility.
Yes, agreed.
All right, because the state doesn't want family in there?
I don't think that's.
Well, no, there are several other changes that the state passed that we have to react to.
All right, so it's like if we have 30 different ordinances that we need to update because the state has, you know, forced us to update them. If we have to put every single one of those ordinances before the Republican warrant, that's gonna be gigantic, so. But let's keep, let's keep the board member updates moving so we can keep this meeting going along.
What is the last date for making changes for this ordinance? The timing schedule?
It's in January or something like that.
It's like the end of January.
We still have time and we need to make sure we.
You start, you can start hearing your own amendments December 10th. And that's the period for when people can come and petition their own stuff is from November something to December 10th. And you guys have this calendar. I sent it to you at some point.
Okay, thank you. I, I didn't have it in front of me, so.
No worries.
Thanks for keeping an eye on us, Nick. We need our help.
Any other updates, Mr. Principato?
No, thank you all.
Okay, Mr. Severns?
Um, I'm not gonna provide an update because I've missed the last two CIP meetings.
Okay.
But it sounds like they've been working along pretty good, so maybe needs two or three.
I missed him as well.
All right, so CIP, we're close to wrap it. And basically we are pretty much wrapped up. So that, that's good and we're done there. Select boards, budget season, we've been meeting with department heads, things like that, talking about budget stuff. I do have something that I need to bring up from Dale. Because I pinged him about the, what's it called? The subdivision process that he committed to doing before December 1st. So I pinged him about that to see what he needed from the select board to make sure he had everything because I only know about the, the road naming and bond amount stuff. Anyway, Dale came back and suggested that he thinks it would be beneficial that chairs from department heads meet for a work session to kind of go over the areas of responsibility and kind of plan from there. So we would probably need a, either Dirk or yourself to kind of be planning board rep.
Okay. That meeting hasn't been figured out?
It has not been figured out. It was just more of like, hey, throwing it out there as.
We should do it as a selectman meeting.
Why? We wouldn't have it as, not as like.
Just, yeah, keep Mr. Groton Heiss looped in. If he's unable to attend for some reason, then he can reach out to me and I'll attend in his place. Not a problem.
Yeah.
I won't speak on his behalf for committing to the meeting.
Dale needs to schedule something.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Anything else?
That's what I got.
Mr. Evans?
Got nothing.
All right. Update from me, the Nottingham Community Bio Blitz and Wild Discovery Day is now set for May 2nd. It's a Saturday, May 2nd, 2026. It's the last weekend of spring break. It'll be held at the Marston Farm Recreation Area, likely starting at 7:00 AM with a bird walk and wrapping up around 1:00 PM. So a half-day bio blitz at the Marston Recreation Field. There will be more information coming about as that kind of coalesces a bit more. But mark the date. It's gonna be a nice community event with lots of fun activities. We'll have wildlife presentations, activity stations for people of all ages. So please come and join us. It's about a half a year away, so plenty of time to plan. Right, that's it from me. Mr. Evans?
I will comment on the master plan meeting that we had that was very.
Community workshop.
Community workshop, thank you. And I thank everybody in the public that did come and attend. And it was a lot of great input and it, it kind of generalized some of the ideas. And I was, Blair did a great presentation, thank you. And it was pretty positive. One of the things that we came up with from there is that we might do a second survey for the, at least the housing section to try to get a wider spread definition on those items. So it was, it was just a really good, positive meeting with the positive ideas and that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Mr. Grucek? I don't have anything to report, though I do have a couple of comments in regards to what the public comment was given today. If this is an appropriate time, if not, I'll wait.
Yeah, sure.
So one of the things that he mentioned was that the zoning regulations here are, he, he felt that they were less strict than a lot of other towns. I disagree. I work quite a bit in Rochester, Milton, Strafford, Northwood, Dover, Somersworth, Barrington, and in most cases, the zoning restrictions that we have here are far more stringent. The 30,000 square feet of contiguous buildable area is absolutely ridiculous. It is, it limits most of the lots in town to three to four acres because of steep slopes, wetlands, setbacks. It makes it so that it is incredibly difficult for anyone to build new housing in town because of all of the restrictions that we have here. And I, I totally agree with him. You know, if my parents hadn't died, I wouldn't be living in town because I can't afford to. And I know a lot of other people my age and younger who have no chance to live in town, even if they wanted to, simply because of affordability. And I feel like some of the zoning changes that we can do as the planning board could address some of that. That was it.
Thank you.
I, I'd like to make a quick comment on that if I could do.
I would like for this not to turn into a larger, like, ongoing discussion. This is meant for just updates and for members to give. So if we could just finish through the updates and then if there's time afterwards, maybe we can discuss it more. I prefer that. Mr. Arsenal?
I have no updates at this time.
So one of the updates I wanted to give is that, I, I don't know if in the timeline of things, we've had a meeting since then, but we did have a pre-construction meeting for Fort Hill, Smoke Street. The Fernalds are getting going on their project. So we had CMA, Fernalds, myself, Ellen and Dale and this gentleman here. I think it was the road agent?
Road agent.
Who, who?
Steven Rollins.
Steve Rollins, yeah, DPW, uh, Road Agent guy. Um, just to talk about getting going, um, it's part of what they have to do, um, is notify the town and then we do the pre-construction meeting just to get everybody on the same page, talk about exchange of documents, um, and just sort of like what to expect. Just sort of in that process, um, of getting that going. Oh, and their contractor was here too, so he was there talking a little bit about, um, you know, his process and what to expect in terms of timeline and that sort of thing. So, it's a fairly big project, I think they've already done the two houses off of Fort Hill because those are frontage lots, they were just a shared driveway off of the road, so nothing needed to be done there.
I don't think they've done the second one.
They haven't done the second one, okay.
There's still a lot of piles of dirt there and I don't see a house, so.
Okay, fair enough. Um, unless they're going for an adobe or something, then it hasn't been done. Uh, so yes, those two are basically, uh, off running because, yeah, like I said, they're frontage lots, they don't need the town to, to, to come in and do anything. Uh, but the other two are two cul-de-sacs off of Smoke Street, um, and they're focused on one, not the other. Um, the other one's sort of TBD in terms of timeline and that sort of thing, but, um, that's more of an FYI. So if friends, family, neighbors ask about it, you can say, yes, it's, it's in process, yes, it was approved, and if you have a complaint, go talk to Dale.
Approved in late twenty twenty-three, is that right? Or early twenty twenty-four?
I think it was early twenty twenty-four, I think it was twenty twenty-three application.
Okay.
Is that, is that right? Yeah.
Well, that's correct.
Okay. Yeah, okay, so, so that's, uh, yeah, like I said, just an FYI. Um, and then, uh, yeah, Chris talked a little bit about the, um, community workshop on housing and natural resources. Uh, we had some members from this group, some members from the subcommittee, um, not a huge turnout, I was hoping for Jeff Hill, could have few more, but we made some adjustments on the fly and we consolidated four, four tables, four groups down to two. Um, and then, you know, the, the, those groups kind of changed to get, uh, swapped, uh, and, uh, you know, we did it that way. Um, you know, and in some respects, uh, when you're doing these things, you try to play a numbers game, you know, get as many people in the room because that's gonna generate more ideas, but sometimes when you get small groups, you just can go a little bit deeper because you don't have to get everybody's one comment, um, and, um, you know, some people feel a little bit more comfortable talking in smaller groups, so, I don't know, it's, it's hard to truly say that it was, would have been better with a lot more, but, you know, it's been my experience. Still, I, as Chris mentioned, there, there was some good discussion, um, in both groups that I worked with. Uh, you know, it was a three hour Saturday morning thing, so, you know, you expect people to start to peter off by the end and, and my second group was going strong. So it was nice to see, I was encouraged by it, um, and, um, you know, the goal for an outcome is some high level feedback that we can turn into goals and a vision for the two chapters. The responsibility of the subcommittee to start to refine that and, and develop action items that can be put into a plan. And then all of which would be, you know, coupled together with their, the data and stuff and the, the, the sort of narrative that I put together, and then that gets presented as the, um, the final chapter, uh, chapters to the planning board. Uh, so the public will have another chance to speak up on at least the housing chapter, because that will go, uh, the sort of next stop for that one is, is going back before, I mean, they'll go to the subcommittee a few times, but, uh, the chapter going before the planning board for approb, consideration and approval or adoption. The, um, natural resources chapter is sort of just starting to ramp up, we've got a survey that's gonna go out, um, probably in December, but maybe I can try to get it out this month. Um, and then we're gonna do a lot of desktop work, and then in the spring, we're gonna have, uh, the bio blitz, and then we're gonna ask volunteers, train volunteers to do field verification of virtual pools. So, um, that, that project will take off in this winter and really heat up in this, in the spring, and then it'll finish in the summer. Um, the other one probably has a timeline of, you know, maybe the planning board, it comes before this board in, uh, early next year. So that's sort of what to anticipate. Um, beyond that, I don't have any, um, uh, events or webinars to tell you about. Um, but just keep in mind that it's November, we're having this meeting, are we doing another meeting in this month?
We're not scheduled to, I mean, we, if we wanna put one on, we could, but that's Thanksgiving week.
Yeah, so, um, I'm saying to you, this time of year is crazy, we have a ton of zoning that we wanna do, and it's probably not feasible to do all of the amendments, a public hearing in one night. So, December, we probably only have one meeting scheduled.
Also true, December tenth.
So, maybe think about, uh, a second meeting on, on an off night, another Wednesday or something else. Uh, I'm not telling you that's what to do, but, um, it could put a lot of pressure on January. Um, uh, cause as you go, you have a hearing, it goes to the town council. If it comes back with any changes, changes, you definitely have to do a second public hearing. If it doesn't come back with any changes, you could technically choose not to. If the language doesn't change from the, from the last public hearing to the warrant article. But if the town council makes a change or we decide to make a change, maybe we learned about something in the hearing and we decide, oh, yeah, we should tweak that, then we have to have a second public hearing. That's where, uh, Nick's schedule gets a little wonky, it's like, do you need two public hearings or just one? And that's why the deadlines kind of just are, are hard to nail down, so.
There's time to notice that public hearing also.
Yes, that's, yeah, exactly.
It's a big part of it.
About ten days or something, I think, but.
Yeah, so, um, everybody's got.
Notice it.
Right.
So you probably need to notice it twice to have both of them planned and then cancel the second one if you're not, if it's not needed.
Yeah. Um, so everybody's gonna have family events and you're gonna have stuff, you're gonna wanna do parties and stuff, so we just, we have to be conscious of that. You know how this time of year gets crazy, so just sort of a heads up.
If we were to, uh, want to fit in another meeting, uh, to accommodate all this, what would be your suggestion, um, to make sure that we're, you know, able to notice things properly in case we have two hearings, all that good stuff? Do you have a suggestion on when we might look at having that extra meeting to get things done?
So the second.
At least one more meeting while Nick's here.
That would probably benefit.
So, December tenth is what would be our, that's the second Wednesday, that would be our normally scheduled night.
Right.
Um, and then the second, the fourth is the twenty-fourth, so that's not a good one, so maybe this, if it has to be a Wednesday, that's sort of what I'm trying to say is, you know, if, if it has to be a Wednesday, because that's the only night of the week that everyone's free or enough of us are free to justify it, then that would be the seventeenth, because the third we can't do because we can't start holding hearings right until the tenth.
Well, you, the way, there's nothing that says you can't, but if someone comes in with a, their own zoning amendments from the public,
Uh huh.
then we'd have to change and you'd have to have another clean read through, as you said. So it doesn't make sense to do it until after the tenth.
Oh, right, in case their zoning amendment conflicts with the one we're putting forward.
Exactly.
So we'd sort of do it, take it in our own risk.
Right, yeah, you could do it, because probably no one's gonna suggest their own thing, but.
At this point in time.
You never know.
I think what we need to plan for is that the tenth should have, should be a hearing for at least a few zoning amendments. And we should try to get at least a, a few heard, because there's a good chance, there's a lot line adjustment coming if it's not, oh, is that our?
They might not make the deadline.
Yeah, they might not make the tenth, okay.
Are virtual meetings allowed?
Not anymore, unfortunately, no, not even virtual attendance, I don't think. I think you can attend it, but you can't be counted towards the forum or something.
Oh, that's pros and cons, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, it kinda, it got us used to it, but now we're not allowed to use it. Um, so, yeah, I think maybe that has to be, and this isn't much on me, I'm not putting this on you guys, you know, I'm a big part of this as well, um, in terms of preparing for this, but, yeah, maybe the, um.
Cause we need to coordinate with other committees and boards that are, that are here too, don't they? It's like.
But, I mean, select board.
Wednesdays.
I think, are there any other?
Oh, right, in terms of the room.
If we pick another day, yeah. That's what I meant, virtually, we could do it any day, but we have to kind of actually.
Does anyone else use this on Wednesdays?
Not that I know of. In this room, I don't believe so.
It shouldn't really be an issue, because if not, you guys could use that room there, I, we could workshop.
Yeah.
No, but it's a good point. So are we thinking?
We have to put somebody else in that room.
Workshop meeting on Wednesday, December seventeenth, is that the idea? That's what you're suggesting?
No, I'm suggesting a hearing.
A hearing on the seventeenth, okay, just wanted to be clear.
So it would be the tenth and the seventeenth.
Okay.
So maybe we hear the first, I don't know how many there are, whether.
As of right now, there's like seven, but I, but that could be wrong in the warrant articles that I made, like, I don't know.
Honestly, given how many we have, I, I feel like having one in two weeks, uh, on the twenty-sixth would be a good idea to make sure that we have time to workshop through everything. Yeah, it's the day before Thanksgiving, but, I mean.
I'm not partying anymore.
I, yeah, it's, I'm not going anywhere.
That would be hard. If it's a, uh, first off, we gotta, we'd have to have all the language together and the notice out.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not suggesting having, like, a, a public hearing that day, I'm suggesting that we have a meeting to workshop to make sure that we're happy with the language that day. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, you got it, yeah. I'm not driving home on that night from, to Cambridge.
That's a bad night to drive, isn't it?
Yeah, that would be an impossible, it'd take me three hours, four hours to get home, so, but I can get you some language if you guys wanna meet and have, and then send me back comments or something.
Yeah, yeah.
But, I mean, we've had multiple meetings on a lot of these.
We don't have to, have you.
Right, yeah, as I was saying, for the twenty-sixth, I don't need to be here. Um, but also, we've, we've had many here, we've had many meetings and I've got the language, I, I think reflects what the board has been saying. I understand that, uh, you know, what you're, what you're suggesting, and if, um, if you guys wanna go that route, yeah, I, I could probably get, by the twenty-first, by Friday of next week, I could probably get you, at least Nick and I and, and Nancy, you know, between the three of us or the, the other woman, I'm sorry, figured her name, and the clerk's office could pull together s- something by the end of the next week, and so you have some time to look at it and can talk about the twenty-sixth if you really wanted to do that. I, I, I think the other, what Drew was suggesting though is the tenth and the seventeenth of December for two hearings would be advisable.
Yep.
So how do we feel about that? Are, you know, it seems like there is interest on, for both of those extra meetings on the twenty-sixth, was that the date?
Yeah.
Um, in order to have a little more discussion on them before the public hearings, and then having those two public hearings, one after the other.
It doesn't look like there's anybody in this room on the nineteenth.
Next week?
Yeah, if you don't wanna do the twenty.
Well, I don't know if we'd be able to get the language out in time by Wednesday, next week, I guess, that's not gonna happen, I don't know.
I mean, the final language is together.
We have some of it already.
The final language is together, it's just getting it in the formatting for warrant article, that's.
If we can get a little jumpstart on the nineteenth, that'd be. Well, the key thing is having the public hearings for it, like, you need to have two of them to get, you need to have the clean read through and then your approval. And you need to have that before January, let's say, twenty-fifth, something like that. We can't have a public hearing the nineteenth, like, next week.
No.
No, yeah, that's not, I think the suggestion is just a workshop for us to go over at the end, and then the two hearings would be on the tenth and seventeenth of December.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you have, uh, the final language, you guys have it. Uh, if you don't.
I thought at the last meeting, we had some.
I definitely sent it to Nick, I thought I copied the board, but if I didn't, I can send it to you. So at least, at the very least, you could have the language, it's just not gonna be in the format, the warrant article friendly format. You know, but you'll have the language in a track change.
Are we the ones responsible for putting it in the format for the warrant?
No, no.
Yeah, so it's, alls we need is just to.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So that, you could do, right?
Yeah. Well, if, so if they have their own changes as well, because that's only for the ones that you brought up, right? If you guys have your own additional changes for zoning them and stuff.
If we're just, yeah, I'm sorry, if we're just, I'm, I'm assuming we're talking about the.
The distinct law changes.
The one that we've taken before.
Yeah, the, the seven, eight.
If there's anything additional, we need to hammer that out to.
Right.
Right, which I thought there was kind of an appetite for that.
There's a lot of stuff we've talked about.
Yeah, it was basically because things were piling up and we need to, we need to get them through at some point before they, you know, they're not gonna stop.
Right.
Um, so, yeah, there is some appetite, basically, as we're being, you know, forced to do it. Um, but we wanna, you know, we're, we're trying to do our, a good faith effort in doing it, so, uh, yeah, I think we are kind of interested in maybe discussing more of them. Um, Blair, if we held that one next, uh, Wednesday on the nineteenth, would you be able to join us for that one too, since it's not?
I can't, I've got, got an event that.
Okay, yeah.
Um, but that doesn't mean, are we talking about a final review of the ones we've looked at or new stuff? Cause I can send you stuff.
Well, both potentially, that we go over what we've already, you know, we just say, yes, this looks good to us with everything that we've already discussed, and then if that doesn't take forever, we would move on to potentially some new, um, changes that we have teed up as well. You've got a very long document for us, Blair, with all the different, you know, stuff that's teed up for getting changed in the ordinances.
Yeah, and I've, I've, I've put forward a few for tonight, I sent you an email with.
Right.
Uh, if you wanna talk about some of those, uh, but there are mostly.
It's anything like last time, this would be a fun one.
It's in here someplace right there.
Circles and circles and circles.
Your first other. Yeah, that one.
So I guess my thought is this, if you've sent us some to discuss and we are planning on meeting next week to also discuss ordinances, maybe we also hold off to discuss those things until next week when we're having a workshop on it. This is assuming that we do have a workshop, we haven't totally agreed on that yet. How does the board feel?
Probably, I mean, we got at least a half hour.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm fine, we have, we have something else on the agenda too, right? There was something else, uh, Blair had, SRPC questions or something like that?
I think that, that one just explains what the SRPC does, I think, you sent that a while ago.
You got that again?
I, I don't remember what it was.
SRPC discuss, discussion questions, okay.
I, I see that, wouldn't you?
Is the document, you sent it in like October and then that meeting got canceled?
Oh.
The, the page is in, Danny can show it to you if it, in his binder. It's in his binder, yeah. It's the second other.
Second other.
It's that one, right, the note you missed, there you go. I've got three others. Yeah, so you have a lot of.
This one?
Yes, that thing. I, I don't know what it is, you asked for it to be in the agenda though.
It is, alright, that's good of me.
Okay, so sorry, before we take.
Yeah, yeah.
Before we move into that, uh, that would be taking the, an agenda item out of order, and we can do that, we can let, I think I, yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and take this agenda item out of order and let, let Blair go over what the document is for us.
If you see the little icon in the top, it's called forward thinking, this is a project that we're doing, which is, um, it's, as, as an RPC, a regional planning commission, the state has nine, we are one of them, we are required to have a ten-year comprehensive plan for our region. And it's just like your master plan, it covers a lot of different topics, transportation, housing, yada, yada, yada. We are redoing ours right now, it's a very long, lengthy process, we probably started it five, six months ago. And this is the outreach stage, again, just like our master plan chapters, it's heavy on the outreach. So I guess what this is looking for is your thoughts on these six questions on the backside of the document. I don't know where you're supposed to answer them, I can find out for you, or maybe it's just.
Scream them into the void?
Yeah.
Shout it to hell.
And I'll intercept it, everybody can. Yeah, I, 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 I don't know if he's got a survey attached to it or not, I'd have to double check for you all, but. That's what forward thinking is, it's, it's our organization's ten-year master plan comprehensive.
Do you have a next meeting that this is going on to, like, discuss these points or not?
I don't know, it's not my, I mean, it's someone else's project in the office and I just sort of pass it along. That doesn't look like it's giving me anything to tell you what to do with it. Did I send anything about floodplain maps?
Floodplains?
You might have, yeah. FEMA flood maps?
That might, was it, was that over this?
Alright, has anyone seen anything about this?
No.
Alright, so your, my understanding is that your section of Rockingham County finally got updated FEMA flood maps, is that right?
Yeah.
And so you're in the comment phase right now. I got an email on it from the state and I thought I sent it along, I thought that's what we were talking about, um, but I will have to find it and resend it. So keep an eye out for that email from me, I'll, I'll send it to. So keep an eye out for that email from me, I'll, I'll send it to everybody, not just Nick, so that you guys take a look at it. So this, you'll, you'll see, uh, what, what the comment opportunities are, because it's not something that would go through me anyways, you would have to go to the state with it. But, yeah, it shows what your new FEMA flood, flood maps look like.
So much better than the last one there.
Yeah, and, and, I mean, one of the big things is they've been like digitizing them and stuff.
So, yeah, um, they've gone from using the old maps and just dropping them onto the aerial imagery to actually taking the, uh, LiDAR data from the, um, twenty nineteen Northeast LiDAR project to get actual measurements as opposed to, you know, the twenty foot contours that they were using from nineteen thirty four. To actually get a more accurate, uh, ground data for where those potential flood zones are. Still using the old FISs, but those haven't really changed all that much.
Yeah, there's no elevation data, but at least just where the lines are drawing are getting much more accurate, because a lot of times they would just somewhere around here, and then people get pulled into the flood zone and now they need flood insurance. Or if they want to, then they have to go out and get an elevation certificate through a, a surveyor, and that gets very costly. You have to do a letter of map adjustment and, you know, these are like, because it involves the federal government, so you can imagine how long sometimes this takes. So yeah, it is, they're digitizing them, which makes it more accessible, but it's also makes it more accurate, um, at least for you know, where the line is and who's in it and who's out. So, I, I will send that along, um, and, uh, you know, it'll give you a chance to take a look at that. Alright, uh, so that's what that other agenda item was. And you got an extra one, because I wasn't sure what. And then I, I sent this out, you guys see this one?
They all have that one.
That's the one we got.
That's in your.
You got that one?
Alright.
Draft, draft, draft.
Draft, draft, draft.
Email or only here in the packet?
It's in your packet.
In your packet.
Excellent.
It comes, it gets in the packet because it comes to an, it comes from an email.
Alright.
But this one was sent directly to all of you on Monday when I sent the lot line adjustment staff report. So I just picked some ones that I thought were important, because we've talked about them for one reason or another, and, um, I, I think that they need to get looked at. There are ones that you all have discussed too, so I don't want mine to take priority, I just, I know that at some point they're gonna eventually need to be done. That being said, there's three on here, two zoning, no, one zoning two subdivision slash site review. The zoning one, uh, is the first one and it's reviewing, consider revising the allowed uses in our zoning districts. If you recall, um, Nottingham Business Park on Route Four had to go to the ZBA. And that just was silly, that should have never happened. So I, I, I think we should think about adding a couple of uses. And and now that I'm realizing it, we caught that one, didn't we? In one of the other zoning amendments. Yeah, it was the one that where I have, we had to add multifamily and I said oh god, I already did, I added warehousing and manufacturing to the.
That's true.
That's the district. I'm sorry, I'm contradicting myself now. We already did this, so if you recall, the RSA the revision, revised RSA said we had to add multifamily to Route Four to your commercial district. I took that as an opportunity to add warehousing and manufacturing.
Which we are, we went through, like we discussed.
Do you guys remember this?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so.
Vaguely.
Yeah. So in addition to adding two of the allowed uses in the commercial industrial zone, multifamily dwelling, which is what we were required to add I also added, and you reviewed warehousing and manufacturing, because those were two uses that were not allowed. And one of those was the one that the business park wanted to use. So I guess I already, I already did that.
Pat on the back for us.
I know, right? I'll take it as a pat.
We gotta remember to put that forward.
Yes.
Yeah, right.
Alright, so that one was covered for that district. I did also suggest in the, um, the town center district currently does not allow home occupation. And since it does allow single family residential, I think that the board should be clear that home occupation is allowed since home occupations are.
What is it, coal?
Home. Home occupations.
Home, oh, really?
Yeah. It's listed in the AgRes district as an allowed use, but it's not listed in the town center district.
Isn't that odd?
It is.
It's just an oversight, right?
I would think so, but, um, yeah. And then the last one is uh, and this one would take more discussion, but allowing mixed use structures, so for example, residential over retail in any district. Is this something that the town would want to allow? A town center district, for example, is the type of district where you would want to do that. That's getting to be more like that village zoning type of concept where, you know, you have a walkable area where you have, you know, a little bit closer in development and you have that mix of uses. In a community like yours, to do anything like a retail shop or a service shop, you're never gonna make enough money to justify building a whole new structure at commercial standards for something like that. If you want to encourage the business, you kind of have to allow the residential to, to sort of carry the note. This is what builders will tell you, um, investors will tell you. It just, unless you're in like a really dense area and you can get away with a single use structure and enough foot traffic coming through, um, it, to not do mixed use makes, makes that business piece really difficult to, to come in. They, they can only get so much money for, um, commercial rents. So a mixed use structure, um, might be something that the board would want to consider. And you can think about that in a lot of different ways in terms of like lot size, setbacks, you know, the density of it. One unit, two unit, three units above the, the. How do you want to do it? But it might be something worth considering.
So just a, I'm not sure if it's a question or a comment, but, uh, Demon Store over in West Nottingham. You know, that's a retail facility and then there's an apartment above it, you know, i- is that that sort of mixed use structure not permitted currently?
So I, I would say no, because mixed use is often called out as an allowed use in, in, it's somewhere in the zoning. If it's not just a blanket statement saying, if we allow retail and we allow residential, yes, you can have a mixed use structure, but usually ordinances will be clear about it. Remember, these are prescriptive, uh, it's a prescriptive document, I mean, the, the default is if it doesn't say you can do it, you can't do it.
Right.
Right? So by saying you can do it, you're sort of making it clear.
Okay.
Yeah.
Except that that existed before mixed use ever came up as a terminology.
Yeah, existed before zoning, so.
So is it grandfather?
Yes, yes. But if something was to happen where he changed.
How do you document that in the zoning world?
How do you? Existing nonconforming use?
How do you document that? Is it nonconforming?
Yes.
It's not conforming. Nonconforming, it was allowed when it was built.
Because it doesn't match the current zoning.
So the current zoning overrides everything else?
Well, that's why we have preexisting. In town, right? Like, my lot is under two acres, but I'm still allowed to do certain things on it because it's a preexisting nonconforming lot. But, right, that preexisted the current zoning laws. I'm not saying that that's actually the way that it's recorded, but.
But supposedly that limits your capabilities to do things on your property that when your property was created, you were allowed to, to do stuff on.
So kind of getting into that a little bit.
Okay.
Not to, not to derail the conversation, but, um, the statements on the, or the, the new statute on ADUs, for example. You have, for example, lots of nonconforming lots right around the lake that are well below the size requirements that we require in town or that are required by DES or that are, uh, required by the new statutes. But the new statute says specifically that ADUs are allowed.
Correct.
You've got a conflict there that how do you reconcile that? And I don't have a good answer.
I don't think there is one. Yeah, when you do zoning changes, you should try and bring more things into conformance, um, rather than creating more nonconforming things. But yeah, just the addition, just the creation of zoning and what did you guys do at the nineteen eighties, I think you adopted zoning? Yeah, you pretty much probably created everything nonconforming with the exception of like farm stuff, you know? And that's why you have the nonconformance section, which spells out the process for additions, renovations and such to a nonconforming use.
There's, there's a lot of that going on in town.
Oh, believe me, I am well aware.
It, it just baffles the crap out of me.
What's that?
The nonconformance or the?
No.
Home occupation?
The capability that nonconformance, not, that lots that were, um, that'll
Previously allowed uses?
Yeah, previously allowed uses that are no longer allowed in the present configuration of our zoning ordinances can be whacked, can be whacked, and, and that's not right.
It's, it's true, it's zoning ordinance should look and have reality to them and, you know, that we don't have. I think there's a gap between the, what we expect new people coming in to develop a lot to do versus we're all sitting here on, I have a point three, four acre lot and, you know, it sustains a house and a septic and a well and a driveway and a garage and a yard and garden and it's all good. And, you know, the next guy coming in has to have minimum two acres if it's a perfect lot to fit the lot envelope and probably three, like Glenn said, three or four acres, and it's putting a burden on these new house, that's why new houses are seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the only possible way to make any adjustment to that is a higher density, that's, it's, I, I'm in this business, real estate business and we do, I do a lot of, lot sales and developments and, um, in different towns and it's the only answer is lower our density, uh, we need to make a couple little changes, maybe, um, maybe we look at like our setbacks. We have our town setbacks.
Are huge.
Are huge, and we are higher than all the surrounding towns around us, higher average than all these surrounding towns around us. So maybe we should say, hey, instead of a, a fifty foot side setback, maybe a thirty foot like the other towns is, is reasonable. And something like that might fix that lot envelope a little bit, because right now we're saying here's fifty feet, you can't even do anything with with this lot envelope and it's just adding extra land onto the whole cause, so, um, anyway.
Yeah, one of the things that, you know, we talked about, one of the stations, the tables in the housing workshop was, you know, different types of housing uses, housing types, housing styles, and where they might be appropriate. And there was some, you know, there was some feedback, so that might be something that we can look about, look at when we get to the subcommittee and, and um, want to think about that.
I have a question with Glenn if I can, just real, while, while we're finishing it. What are septic requirements now? I mean, how much land, given, I know there's different soil types, but what's, what's what would be on a good, good lot, what's a minimum that you need for like a three bedroom house, is like twenty thousand square feet or? I gotta look at it, hang on.
Alright, in the meantime, because we got, we got twelve minutes, we got twelve minutes, it's on when it turns to pumpkins. I will, um, I'll let you know. So the second one on my list is looking at fire cisterns. Our regulations still require the fiberglass or polypropylene. We've, we've had the fire chief in here, I feel like we've gotten to the point where we agree, this board agrees that allowing the, uh, uh, concrete cisterns, no?
I, I thought that's. I can't speak for the present fire chief, but we have one fail on Constitution Ave.
Yeah, I know that he was talking about some of them failing because they happen to be redlined.
Rewind and redone and all that kind of stuff.
I think he said one and that was it, I think he was quite clear, he was okay.
Well, I, I mean, it has gotten better, the, the way in which you put them together, but I think what you'll find is that the support of the system i- is really the key to it and I don't want to say this happened, but I, I'm pretty sure where that particular one was located was on a stump dump.
Okay. Right, so the, so the. Right, so the ground, the ground fell beneath it, it wasn't the material of the, the, the system.
Correct, but the other ones don't do that.
Right, because they won't, because they'll shift evenly or whatever. Yeah, I wouldn't want to change this without, um.
We did have a year, we had this conversation.
Meeting, we had.
Were you not, were you guys not here?
I have a recollection of that as well, and I don't.
The fire chief came in and told us.
On this board.
It was in the last year.
Yeah, no, it, it was last year, not this year, last year at the mixed planning zoning, everybody meeting.
Oh, I didn't go to that. Wasn't it here in this room?
No, last year, last year's.
No, no, I mean, the meeting where the chief came in and talked to us.
I don't think we've had a meeting since we've been in here where the fire chief has joined us.
Fire chief's a hundred percent came here and talked to us, but I don't know about that.
I, I will say.
Yeah, so Blair, I think that was last year that that happened, because I, I remember that too, but I think that was at the last joint meeting, you know, last August.
I think you're getting two things construed here. The building that was put in at Shea Concrete Products, which is not a cistern, is a concrete product tank. And it is going to be used for fire suppression, but also for other things, so it's not necessarily a cistern.
Are you talking about the Nottingham Business Park?
No.
No. Oh, okay.
Because I asked that, that question specifically because I was.
Okay.
Because we've had some previous activity with cisterns made out of concrete that would not seal properly, can't get pressures in them and a bunch of things like that. They finally got it up to pressure and then it failed, so it was kind of like, I don't know.
Well, I know that Ed, the, the board's, Ed, through Ed, signed off on someone doing a, a concrete one. So.
That was definitely not this year then.
Sounds like the board wants to get a little more info on that and maybe get the fire chiefs.
You could get the fire chief in here to talk or, or at least comment on it.
Yeah.
So, but again, Shea Products, I believe, put in a concrete thing because they make concrete stuff and but it wasn't considered a fire cistern, could be used for that, but it wasn't considered that.
I thought that one was gonna be a layup because we talked.
I know. You got the first one's a layup, Blair.
I read it and it was like, wait a minute.
Would you like me to reach out to the fire chief for comments on this?
Please do.
Please do.
Okay.
The difference of like a five thousand dollar cistern to a thirty thousand dollar cistern, I think that's not appropriate since every fire chief in town and in the state is approving cement, concrete cisterns. I don't think there's anything unique about Nottingham to put that, that expense on someone.
It is what it is.
That doesn't mean anything to you?
It does not, I'm sorry.
The affordability crisis is gonna take care of itself, I mean. Alright, um, alright, let's move on to the third one then.
That's the cost of doing business, that's the cost of doing business.
Sorry, it gets passed on to the consumers and you can't just keep passing everything on.
It's exclusive to Nottingham.
It is.
Or now if you could.
Well, how many, how many other towns have cisterns?
They all have cisterns, but they don't require it to be a polypropylene one, they would say cement is fine. Alright, so the third one was review and consider revising the minimum road standards language and table one in the subdivision regulations. This was not put forward by me, this was brought to our attention by. This was brought to our attention by one of our more recent reviews by CMA. So Josh pointed it out to us and I honestly, I was hoping Dirk would be here because I think he knows a little bit more about this. I don't know if any of you guys can comment on these kinds of things. I really can't. But he said, I have in my notes that like some of the things that are required in that table aren't even available anymore, like it's products or something?
Yep.
That are just, you can't get. So he was, I guess, the way I went was Mr. Barry had proposed something from one of our recent subdivisions and it included some things that came off of this. And Josh was reviewing it and said, you know, guys, he's right, it's in your regulations, but like this stuff's not even available. So I, there's not much of a conversation to be had here at the moment because like I said, I was expecting Dirk, you know, he's the engineer, he's got a lot more experience with this kind of thing. I'm not and I can't speak eloquently enough about this. And even Dirk may say, we should go back to Josh and get some feedback or something, right? Get like, get his input on it. But I don't want to, I don't want that cost to be borne from me telling him, you know, you guys need to make that recommendation. So I guess this one has to sort of be on hold. Go ahead, sorry.
No, it's all right. To me, this appears to be the same thing that we ran into with building codes. This is, this is some sort of road code that existed at some point in time.
Yeah, I'm sure it was copy-paste.
You know, why is it in our regulations is what I would ask. If there was a reference to something, that would, to me, would be a better way of doing it.
Especially if it's design standards that can change year to year.
We don't, we don't deal with this, this is-
And if we have no expertise to, you know, why are these things in here if it takes an engineer to actually understand it?
CMA is the one that does this for us, so what do they use for a table?
Ashto.
Yeah.
It comes from Ashto.
Yeah, so someplace.
Refer to their latest guideline or something like that.
I think that was probably the suggestion, but without, you know, getting that feedback from you all, I'm not going to just suggest that you do away with the table, but there probably does, I think if you just reference Ashto, it's, you know, you're good unless we've got some kind of wild standard.
No, the, the only thing I will say is that I'm pretty sure that we changed some of these standards because it used to be 25 feet wide and then it went to, I thought, 22, someplace in our regulations. Couple of years back, five years back maybe or something?
I seem to remember that with a subdivision that there was some back and forth in 22 and 24.
Something.
Ridge. Width.
So permeability of, of the road area.
So there's a couple of things about that. Number one, NFPA, National Fire Prevention Association or something like that. They do all of the standards for fire trucks and everything like that. You need to have a 20-foot width for fire truck access, 13.6 high, cleared for emergency vehicles. But that can be as small as 16-foot paved and then four-foot shoulders or two-foot each side, you know, or 20-foot gravel, whatever, until you start getting into the higher speeds and then you need wider lanes and all that other nonsense.
Yeah, so what my notes say is that Josh was saying, as, as you were, as you were saying, those regulations do not meet Ashto. Update the pavement portion of the regs because type B and D pavements have not been available for many years.
Probably about 15 years maybe.
Currently a 19 millimeter and 12.5 millimeter pavement mixes would be used and installed. The current regs require two and one-inch courses, but they would normally be two and a half and one and a half. But these thicknesses do not meet design requirements. So, you know, he was, he gave us some feedback. I made note of it. Again, I feel like that's something that, if it's not a layup, we should really look into it just to make sure that we pursue this because it's, you know, if we're not meeting minimum standards of federally recognized or nationally recognized road standards, you know, that's probably not a good thing. Okay, yeah, so like I said, I thought Dirk was going to be here to get an engineer's perspective on this and then we can just put a pin in this one for now.
Honestly, in, in this particular case, and probably in others, I agree with Skip that this is one of those situations where you should really just have minimum design requirements per Ashto best practices dated blah, blah, blah.
Or, or the most recent even.
Yeah, as amended, yeah.
Yeah, in this, in the minimum design requirements of that section, the, you know, part two, it references the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual to calculate something. They don't give the formulas and everything in the, you know, regs. So seems perfectly reasonable that we could just-
Yeah.
Reference the Ashto regs and say minimum design standard should meet that. But we should also get Dirk's input just to make sure we can get back to the other, you know, nuances to that.
And it would be something that I would recommend that the board consider going back to Josh and asking for recommendation on. I don't want to do it. We don't have engineers in our office, so, not that I don't want to do it, I just, I'm not the guy to do it.
Understood. But these are our words, right? These are right out of our regulations? I think so.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I just copied and pasted them. Yes. The formatting is different, but yes, those are, those are quotes, that's direct language.
So there's no problem necessarily with the language, it's just the table.
Yeah, he was more picking a bone with the, with the table because that's what lays out the minimum road design standards.
Even though we say 20 feet up above, I mean, to me, that's wrong.
The minimum pavement width for local access roads is 20 feet, whereas what? Down in the table, it says 22 to 30 surface width?
Oh, no, that's for the commercial industrial. It says the minimum requirements of the road, sorry, minimum pavement width for local access roads is 20 feet. Local access roads are also down here at the bottom. So why are we giving one and not at the other?
Driveway, minimum local street surface was 16 feet.
And then shoulder width of two. So that makes your 20.
20. And we're saying 20 and it doesn't say-
And it says minimum pavement width is 20.
So one thing to consider is that road design standards vary throughout the country, right? So, you know, they might say 16 feet here, but we might just find that in a New England setting, 20 feet is what you need because of road, because of plows and stuff, you know, pushing banks, creating banks and stuff, you're gonna, that's going to shrink real fast.
That's a problem with national standards, right? I was going to say, it, it has more to do with the NFPA standards, making sure that fire trucks have access to properties.
So maybe we can ask Josh to take a look at this. That might be a way to go. And this is subdivision site plan review, so obviously that's something we can handle at any time within-
At any time, yeah.
With this board. So yeah, I only put a few on there because I did want to leave time for other things that the board wanted to discuss as far as zoning changes. We are at 8:30, but whatever you guys want to do for discussion.
What does the board want to do? Do we want to hold a workshop next Wednesday to continue this discussion? Ones that we've discussed, make sure we're all comfortable with that. It doesn't have to be a long meeting if we get through everything, you know, it doesn't have to be a marathon.
What's that?
Wants an interesting talk, wants a feeling of obligation.
Yeah, there wouldn't be any cases.
Just focus on this stuff.
Do the, do the workshop next week.
Okay, that's fine.
Let's take a motion to have a workshop next week. The date would be 19th, thank you, 6:30 still.
Could you make sure that gets posted, please?
Yeah. In this room?
Yes.
We have a motion to meet next Wednesday, the 19th at 6:30 PM in this room for a workshop on zoning ordinances. Do we have a second?
A second.
Mr. Ryan seconds. Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, that motion passes 700. Do we also want to go ahead and schedule the public hearing for, the second public hearing that isn't on our normal schedule for Wednesday, December 17th at 6:30 PM in conference room one?
I will make that motion.
You said the second public hearing?
Right, because the first public hearing is on the 10th.
Okay.
Blair, is there a time separation between those?
Sorry, there's a motion here, so let's wait for the discussion part. Do we have a second to Mr. Griswold's motion? Mr. Evans, a second of the motion. Any further discussion?
Is there a time period between posting of these meetings for public, you know, like that?
I don't know, because you'd have to, you'd have the posting for the second meeting have to occur, like start before the first hearing.
Correct.
Because it needs like 10 days, right?
Yeah.
The other thing is-
Nothing wrong with that.
No, it's not a problem.
No, that's nothing wrong with that particular action. It's just if there isn't anything for the second hearing.
You just cancel it.
We could cancel it at that point.
Do you want to try to do?
Posted it and got it on the table.
Right.
So let's say we have, let's say we have seven zoning changes, individual zoning changes. Do you want to try to do all seven in one hearing?
Well, so the thing is, if we, even if we did all seven and somehow did some change or whatever, we still would have to have a second hearing to finalize it.
But that would also have to be posted, et cetera, so they couldn't be that December 17th meeting, if that's what you were suggesting, right?
No, it could be.
I thought the second public hearing also needed 10-day notice.
If we give the here, the posting ahead.
Like now.
Oh, I see what you mean. So then you can have them as long as they're getting noticed in proper time, the hearings can be within 10 days.
Okay. Right, the hearing, the hearing is to discuss the zoning amendments.
And, yeah, and if we don't get to all the zoning amendments, the second one can be actually the first.
For those amendments that weren't discussed at the meeting on the 10th.
Right. Because we have a time that we stop and so if we get to that time that we stop, we can transfer those over, correct? As long as they're all posted on the first one.
I guess so, yeah.
The only problem is if we have something that's potentially contentious that may have wording changes and we would need a third one.
Well, it wouldn't be a third, it wouldn't be a third one for the contentious changes because you can only have two, I think. It would be if some moved over to the next one.
Right.
And then that would be their first hearing.
Right.
And then you'd have the second hearing for those, right?
Well, we-
In January.
In January, we could have, we could have another one.
Yeah.
So Skip, last year, we did, we had the two meetings, but when we saw that we were mostly through all the, the jibber jabber, we said, let's vote on this now and be done and forewent the, the subsequent meeting, as I recall. So we're just trying to get this on the table right now and then we could always cancel.
Correct, you can kind of move it along as it, as it goes. You gotta, you gotta notice all of it first and then move it along through the meetings and keep track of which ones are which and, you know, if there's no contention, we vote on one, okay, that doesn't show up the next meeting and so forth and so on. And then, and then if you need a third meeting, I mean, if something becomes very contentious, my guess is we're going to vote it down.
So I remembered something. We don't necessarily, we can do a continuation. We don't have to close the hearing. We can-
That's true, yep.
Continue it at a later date. Which that's, that's how it's usually done.
Just make sure that the hearing notice lists individually as its own hearing each amendment. It's not one hearing to consider zoning amendments.
Right.
Which is sort of what we've been doing up until now because we're just talking at this point. But these ones are hearings, so make sure each one at least has a title. So this way you can continue one while the other ones get voted on, voted down.
Right.
Now these, remember, these seven are the ones that are bringing you into compliance with RSA changes. We might've had a few tweaks in there, but for the most part, 90% of it is stuff that we kind of have to do.
Right. And whether we approve it or not, it is the current law, so.
It's going to be the applicable overriding law anyway.
Yeah.
All right, any further discussion?
It bothers me.
All right, all those in favor of holding the second public hearing on December 17th, Wednesday, December 17th at 6:30 PM here in conference room one, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that motion passes 700. And I think at this point, we are ready to adjourn if somebody would like to make that motion.
Go do it.
Do you want to have a, I believe, if we're talking this correctly, you want to have a meeting on the 17th?
December 17th, yes.
Did we just vote on that?
That is what you just, that is what you just voted to, yes. We've got one next Wednesday as a workshop and then we've got one, December 17th as a public here, second.
Right on top of it now.
All right.
You got one on the 19th.
To send you a reminder.
Do I want an open question with Glenn earlier about the septic? I was kind of curious about and I, and I did want to make one other comment, but I'll say it after.
I will, I will give you three minutes to make this comment, okay? Until 8:40, you've got it.
I, my comments will be super fast.
You've said that plenty of times. Giving you a three-minute limit?
Let the record show that it's not right.
You've got to late 40.
Any of us should potentially think about what changes that we see or should happen based upon our experiences, like the lot envelope thing has been just a problem with all these subdivisions and it's, we should come up with some ideas that maybe we could talk about at the following meeting here in advance. I think that we should lower our setback requirements slightly to in tow with some of the other surrounding towns. I would bring Glenn back and dragging him into this because I said, well, you know, maybe there's state requirements that have lowered septic requirements and made, you know, more density possible and I don't approve septic, so I don't know. So maybe you could just tell us about what's happening in the state on septic requirements and how much lot do you actually need to build a septic for a house or, or ADU or for multi-dwellings or something?
So the, New Hampshire DES has a list of guidelines in the WQ 1000 that has a list of soil types and lot loading size for one to four bedrooms. And ADUs are counted as a bedroom and a half. All of the lot sizing is based on 250 gallons per bedroom per day, which is a crazy amount of water. But the best case scenario in that is you need 30,000 square feet on a lot. However, a septic system needs, in design terms, you have your well, you have a 75-foot exclusion radius, you have a 3,000-square-foot envelope for a house and then a 4,000-square-foot envelope for the leach field. That needs to be outside of the, a 10-foot side setback, a 25-foot wetland setback and outside of the well radius. And other than that, that's it. Now, the lot sizing is- Now, the lot sizing is based on soil types, which you, it's individual for every single lot. And part of it is based on slopes, part of it is based on permeability, part of it is based on the organics in the soil, all of that sort of stuff. But in kind of worst-case scenario, you need 30,000 square feet for a four-bedroom house. And that's including all of that area. You know, your well radius, your house and your septic. And that is inclusive of the setbacks and some poorly drained soils and things of that nature. So our requirement of 30,000 contiguous buildable area exclusive of setbacks and steep slopes and wetlands is well above and beyond the state requirements.
Thank you for that input. I, you know, we don't have time to go into a whole discussion on that. I'm going to suggest to Mr. Grodenheist that at the workshop meeting, maybe after we get through the things that we have planned, we might maybe set aside some time to have an open discussion like this because I know there are members who, you know, it's hard to find time during these meetings to have a, you know, discussion about things that we want to see changed and it's always kind of a promise that's kicked down the road. So maybe this workshop, if we get through this stuff quickly enough, I won't be leading it if Dirk's there, so it's up to him, but I will suggest to him that maybe we leave some time to have more of a discussion on this type of thing. So that this meeting doesn't run much longer, if that sounds okay to you all.
Or maybe if there's a change, maybe outline it ahead and.
Yeah, I mean, if you have ideas or something.
Think about it, look at it ahead.
Sure, yeah. You can always send those to Nick while he's here, you know, Blair and the chair, and they'll send them to the rest of the members as well. Okay.
When are you here until, Nick?
End of technically December 1st, but really because Thanksgiving's into that, it's like the 25th, but it's, yeah, 25th of November.
Going to make you stay until the 1st and do your job.
So you'll work that Tuesday, but obviously not Thursday because that's Thanksgiving.
Yes.
Tuesday, the 25th.
Yes, sir.
Who would we have to train for that position? Like who trains? Just because Elena's here, she would train the next person?
That's a good question.
Fun one. Like requirements are a contract to stay a certain time.
We did.
There is an open.
There's a motion to adjourn?
Well, there was a request for one, but if you have a quick.
One of the things we had, Kevin, who was before Elena, and then Elena do a lot of, which is document processes. So while someone will physically have to train the person about what to do, there's a lot of stuff has been getting documented over time, so it's less onerous than it used to be. It's not the, it's not everything you wanted to hear, but it is, you know, something to it.
It's like this. 2022 Town Report also shows the short version of Warren, our Warren articles. I don't know how you would go back today, look at that and say, oh, this is what they did. I did a lot of that today and that was the only year that I think that that happened, but I don't know.
I'll ask Ed and see if he remembers.
Like to make a motion? Like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion has been made, seconded to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye, 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 aye.
None opposed. I'll see you later.